Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our October 13th, 2025 Fayetteville City Council Meeting in order. We welcome those who are joining us in the audience, those who are also joining us remotely. I think we have Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, who will be calling in remotely. Uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, can you hear us?
Yes, good afternoon.
All right, good afternoon. Uh, council at this time, just, uh, we'll ask that Chaplain Alterman, uh, would come forth and would give us our prayer. At this time, we ask that all would please stand for the invocation immediately following the prayer if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Invite you to join me in a word of prayer. Lord Almighty, today we look to your character as the God of all wisdom, the Prince of peace and the Creator of the universe, as we seek your blessing upon this city and its leaders. We humbly ask you to provide divine insight into the difficult and complex problems we face. Give our leaders the courage and strength to reject the easy wrong and choose the hard right. We pray you grow the unity of spirit in our city, that the welfare and prosperity of Fayetteville citizens would remain uppermost in the hearts and minds of our leaders, that the citizens of this city would grow in their love for each other and their neighborly goodness, rejoicing with those who rejoice and mourning with those who mourn. Finally, we pray that this fine city of Fayetteville would be a city on a hill, a beacon of light and a shining example of your grace and blessing poured out upon us. Lord, we give thanks for our city's leaders, the humble servants charged with governing and leading us, and we pray that your strength and their resolve, let them never grow weary in doing good, but hold on to the hope of reaping a just reward for their efforts. It is in the mighty and powerful name of him who is seated on the throne of heaven for all eternity that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and freedom.
Thank you, uh, sir. Chaplain, if, uh, you wanted to share, give us a little information about yourself, maybe where you're from and how long you've been in our community?
Absolutely. I was born in Charlotte, North Carolina. Um, been here for Fayetteville for about six years off and on with, uh, the military life, and, uh, just privileged to get to serve the community and the soldiers and families, um, that live here.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you for your service, and thank you for joining us tonight. Let's give Chaplain a round of applause. All right, council at this time, uh, as we prepare for the announcements, uh, like to pause for just a moment and have a mo- moment of silence. Uh, today, our city mourns with, uh, three families for the loss of their loved ones in a, in a fatal accident, uh, not too long ago, when, uh, we asked for the prayers for the fourth, uh, young lady who is, uh, going through a recovery process. And so, at this time, uh, members of the East Smith Golden Bull family, as well as the entire community, we mourn and, uh, would like to give a moment of silence, if we could, uh, in memory of those three young lives that were lost. Amen. Thank you. Thank you for indulging us and allowing us to, to do that. And to the families, uh, in our community, can please note that you'll continue to be in our thoughts and in our prayers these difficult days. Uh, with that, also, we'll go to, uh, Councilmember Benevente, who has an announcement as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, this coming Saturday, October the 18th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, the, uh, 12th Annual Pinwheel Masquerade Ball and Auction will be happening. Uh, we know that the Child Advocacy Center, uh, does this annually, and it's a great opportunity to support their work, uh, in assisting, uh, young people here in this community. Uh, so I just want to make everyone aware that they haven't gotten their tickets yet. Saturday, October 18th, from 6:00 to 10:00, the Pinwheel Masquerade Ball and Auction to Unmask Child Abuse will be happening this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Uh, also, uh, go to Councilmember DJ Hair.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to give everyone, not only in here, but those that are listening virtually, that we will begin our early voting for the general election that will begin this Thursday, uh, October the 16th, and it runs until November the 1st. And then we go into the general election, which is November the 4th. I always, also would like to announce that there is a little change this year, Mayor, than it was in the last election. We now have three voting sites instead of two. And this year, we will be at the Board of Election Office, we will be at Kiwanis Recreation Center, which is on, close to the campus of Fayette Tech, um, College, Community College, and then we also have, uh, Clifdale Recreation Center. So please keep that in your mind, and, uh, everyone go out and support your candidate during the early vote for the general election. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hair. Um, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to announce, um, that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and for people that are driving by the, um, City Hall to know that we are lighting up our lobby in pink, and for all the women out there, I think over 40 it is now, please remember to get your mammograms. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, council, with that, we will move to, uh, recognitions at this time, and I'll go to Councilmember Thompson. We'll ask that Mr. Jordan Timmons and any of the members of Lowe's Store, uh, 0388, if they can meet him at the podium, please.
Well, thank you. Let me just first add that, uh, uh, there are people out there that I call unsung heroes that contribute so much to our community that it is not noticed. Sometimes it's not appreciated, and sometimes it's not even known. And I just wanted to be known today that because of the Lowe's store today, we have an additional 700, close to 700 people that are going to get fire alarms due to their generosity and their donations above on what the city of Fayetteville has already purchased. These are the things that we have, uh, in our possession that these guys has provided for you guys out there, our senior citizens, our low-income families, the ones who cannot have a fire alarm in their house. There's no need for you to go without, because these guys are here to provide it. And on top of that, the fire department will install it for you free. So, we're gonna go ahead and start this proclamation. The two gentlemen that I have here with me is Nate, the store manager of Lowe's, and Jordan, the assistant manager at Lowe's. And I want you guys to give these guys a round of applause for what they do to protect our citizens. So, uh, the proclamation reads, "In recognition and sincere appreciation of your continued support of the Fayetteville Fire and Police Department, your generosity and commitment to our community exemplifies the spirit of partnership and service. Through your ongoing support and help, strengthen the safety, preparedness, and well-being of all our citizens in the city of Fayetteville." God bless you and thank you, guys. And on top of that, I want to present a city coin to Jordan, 'cause he is the guy that made it happen with, uh, Captain Shake Shaft over here, who's, is, is taking the photos. You guys are truly unsung heroes. Come on over here, sir. This one is yours. Uh-uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm with them. Let's get one right here first.
And Captain, can you get in there as well?
And I just wanna add one more thing to you guys. Uh, Mr. Mayor, don't go nowhere. I'm the one that just recognized you guys, but this is on behalf of all the council, 'cause I know all the council appreciate the, the wonderful job you guys are doing in keeping our, our entire city safe. So, council, come on up. Let's take a photo with these guys.
Perfect.
Come on over to short ladies.
Counsel, perfect. There we go. Oh, it's... Councilmember Hondros, can you take a step just this way? I know the mic is hot. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson, and thank you, uh, to Lowe's and to, uh, to gentlemen, Mr. Timmons and Mr.
Store manager Nate.
And Mr. Nate. Yes, thank you for your work. Uh, Councilmember Thompson, turn it back over to you. You have, uh, some other special guests you'd like to recognize?
I do, Mr. Mayor, and once again, these are some more unsung heroes that are doing great things for our community. Uh, Laquita, come on up here with me. Laquita is the vice chair of our Fayetteville Next. If most of y'all didn't get a chance, she had her adult field day, and she had it at Rick's Place, which is in my district, District 6, off of Shenandoah Drive. Rick's Place also provides a facility for our Aaron, Aaron Lake Community, Community Watch. This is another operation that gives back to the citizens without asking for a dime. So how do we recognize people when they have so much selfless service? At least we can do is honor them here in front of the entire city and give them a level of appreciation. So can you at least, uh, read the names off of them? I'll read the certificate. Certificate states, "In recognition and sincere gratitude of your valuable contributions to the Fayetteville Next Adult Field Day, your professionalism, enthusiasm, and commitment helped ensure the success of the event, creating an experience that fosters unity, welcome, and community spirit for all participants." Now, I have a city coin. I have a city coin for everybody, but I'm gonna give it to... Is it named Ben? Your husband. What's his name? Come on up here first, sir. I'm gonna let you speak on behalf of everybody. She's gonna come up for him, I guess. Go ahead and read the names for me, Malik.
Yes. I actually want all of the, um, board members of Fayetteville Next to come up at this time, please.
We have more up here?
Yes, we do.
Come on up, board members.
Thank you. So as I call the names, please, uh, walk forward to the podium. First name I'll call is Diesel Combs Cooms. Tim Toma. Eric Blasiter. Ben Trailer.
Come on up. You hear your name?
John Yerby. Tammy Coomer. Alexandria Serena. Zachary Hilton.
That's it? Tell them, come on up.
Come on up, guys.
I'm gonna give them all to you. For those that are not here, they can separate them first. John, okay. Come on, John. Who's gonna get the coin? So I'm gonna give the coin to John, and John, I'm gonna let you speak on behalf of Rick's Place.
Thanks, sir.
And I'm gonna give you the certificates for those who are here and those who are not here.
Thank you, sir. So, thank you, uh, councilmen, for this recognition, and thank you, uh, Fayetteville Next Committee for choosing us to host your event. You know, the Rick Herriman Foundation, kinda hard to say, uh, but it's, it's really, we're grateful to be able to, to pass on the legacy of Rick, who gave the ultimate sacrifice in 2006 as a soldier right here at Fort Bragg. And, uh, if you haven't been out to Rick's Place, you'll, you'll see that legacy, uh, just continue, uh, and it's through the heart and the service of the staff that you see before you here. Uh, and so, we are, uh, an important part of the community, and, uh, our mission is to give back to the community, and particularly the military families of this community. And so I just ask you to, to think about them at this time, uh, as, and also the Department of Defense employees that, uh, because of the shutdown, you know, the little, little uncertainty. And so I just want you to know, if you know somebody that needs some help or needs a place to go, we got 50 acres, we got a wonderful sp- park out there, and it's open seven days a week. And, uh, if somebody needs anything, you have them reach out to us, and we will, uh, direct the resources that they need to them for sure. So, thank you. Yeah, yes, sir.
All right, let's get a photo. Come on, y'all.
Okay.
Rick, you stay right here, John.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Thompson. Thank you to Rick's Place. As always, uh, doors hinge on, welcome hinges. Uh, thank you to Fayetteville Next for the great work you're doing in this community to continue to, uh, build activity and purpose, uh, throughout this community for our next generation. At this time, we would like to have a couple of proclamations I'd also like to share. Uh, the first proclamation, uh, is given in recognition of indigenous people, and it reads as follows, "Indigenous people inhabited this country long before the colonization of the Americas began, whereas North Carolina is home to more than 122,000 American Indians and has eight historic tribes, the Kohairi, Eastern Band of the Cherokee, the Hala'wassaponi, the Lumbee, the Okanichi Band of the Saponi, the Sapona, or Sapone, and the Wakama Siwon. And whereas the indigenous people have built vibrant and diverse cultures safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and traditions across the generations, whereas the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina honors and respects the heritage and the culture of our American Indian tribes and its people, whereas we value the many contributions made to technology, to medicine, science, philosophy, and arts in our society and community through indigenous people's history, culture, and knowledge, and their labor. Whereas the city of Fayetteville recognizes the strength and resilience of the indigenous people and honor the tribal nations that continue to thrive today. Now therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, to hereby proclaim October 13th in the year of 2025, in honor of Indigenous People Day in the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina." Let's give them a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, um, if it's appropriate, I'd like to ask our staff members to come up and receive that from you as well. We have several here.
Okay.
If I could ask, um, Chris, Andy, Alex, um, as well as John, um, John Jones, to come up and receive that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Real quick, good afternoon, council. City manager, city attorney, good evening, excuse me. Uh, John Jones here with the city of Fayetteville, Director of Office of Community Safety. Again, thank you for this on behalf of my ancestors, my colleagues' ancestors, and all those who reigned this land at one point, who still reign this land here today. Um, this couldn't be a bigger honor. So, on behalf of my family, uh, we just are showing a lot of gratitude for you all for allowing us to be honored, and, um, my colleagues as well in this space. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And go to Mayor Pro Tim for another proclamation. I'm not sure who the recipient of this, who will receive this on behalf of, uh, World Homeless Day. Oh, okay. All right, Mr. McMillan, I'll meet you at the podium.
Whereas World Homeless Day is observed annually on October 10th to draw attention to the needs of people who experience homelessness locally and globally. And whereas homelessness affects individuals and families of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances, and is often the result of some, some symptomatic issues such as lack of affordable housing, unemployment, mental health challenges, and domestic violence. And whereas the city of Fayetteville recognizes the dignity and humanity of every person and is committed to addressing homelessness through compassion, collaborative, and sustainable solutions. And whereas local organizations, service providers, faith-based groups, and volunteers work tirelessly to support those experiencing homelessness by offering shelter, food, healthcare, employment assistance, and pathways to permanent housing. And whereas World Homeless Day provides an opportunity for citizens to learn about homelessness, advocate for policy change, and support efforts to promote housing stability and social inclusion for all. And whereas the city council encourages all residents to reflect on the importance of community, empathy, and action in flight to end homelessness. Now therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 residents, do hereby honorably proclaim the 10th day of October 2025 to be known as World Homeless Day. In Fayetteville, we urge all citizens to recognize the efforts of those working to end homelessness and support initiatives that uplift and empower our most vulnerable neighbors. In witness thereof, I here undue set my hand of the cause of the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 10th day of October 2025. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
I'm gonna ask my neighbors, if y'all could, stay up here with me. Stay up here. This is an alliance. I am proud to, uh, to receive this on behalf of the Community Awareness Alliance, but what you see here, uh, this, the show of solidarity embodies what this alliance is all about, and what it's been about for, uh, more than a decade. Ladies and gentlemen of Fayetteville City Council and my fellow community members, good evening. Worked adjacent to the Community Awareness Alliance for nearly a decade, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the CAA. I want to extend heartfelt gratitude for your recognition of World Homeless Day. We know that acknowledging this day is more than just a symbolic act. It's a testament to our collective commitment to protect the most vulnerable against, amongst us. Those who are unhoused and too often face the threat of, uh, being criminalized simply for the circumstances. In the midst of a housing shortage and an affordability crisis, this organization and this alliance that you see before you stands in the breach, advocating for housing justice, along with education justice and economic equality. Over the years, the Community Awareness Alliance has stood on the front lines of these fights. They've advocated fiercely to ensure that no person is treated as a problem, to be policed, or simply because they lack stable housing. And it's thanks to organizations like this, at the incredible advocates of, of this room, that we continue to make strides. I'd like to take a moment to offer special thanks to some of the folks who've been pivotal in these efforts. The alliance itself, very importantly, my dear friend and sister in movement, Dr. Val, who I'd like just to take a minute to give a hand to. Patrice Williams, Bishop Benny Bryant, Miss T., the Cornerstone Christians, Christian and Parliament Center, Councilmember Mario Benevente, Reverend Stewart, and Sean Boston. Your dedication is the backbone of this work. An example of the strength of this alliance was their work between 2022 and 2024 to fight for the establishment of the OCS, the Office of Community Safety. Their persistence ensured that, that the care to the unhoused would remain a pillar of the OCS. I'd also like to encourage at this time the council to take steps to decriminalize being unhoused by repealing the new no camping and no panhandling ordinances. Let's reject criminalization and instead lead with love and empathy in the ways we see the Community Awareness Alliance and other organizations doing. And to ensure that the alliance has a seat at the table for future strategy to combat homelessness in this city. After all, who better to center than the steadfast advocates you see before you and the impacted community members? With your continued support, we can build a Fayetteville where compassion leads the way and where everyone has a place to call home. Thank you all for being part of this journey and for standing with us. All of us are none.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Thank you to, uh, the organizations for your hard work and dedication to the community. Um, at this time, as we move, uh, past our announcements and recognition, we'll go to Mr. Hewitt for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. Um, a few, um, brief remarks, um, um, tonight. Uh, the first, um, I'd like to share is consistent, um, with council's desire for, um, beauty by design and for enhanced air travel. and for enhanced air travel to and from Fayetteville Regional Airport. We're very excited to announce that the Fayetteville Airport has a new art exhibit that celebrates local culture and heritage. The, it is actually up now, but we'll hold an opening reception with the council on October 23rd from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and visitors are invited to experience the artwork that firsthand and meet the artists behind those pieces as well. It includes 12 talented local artists, each representing diverse perspectives that reflect the vibrant community and the spirit of our region, and the art exhibit will be up through February 5th of 2026. The other announcement that I'd like to share is that our own Jeffrey Yates has been selected, recognized rather, and will receive his ICMA credential manager status in Tampa with me later this month. To tell you a little bit about the ICMA credential manager designation, it is one of the highest honors that ICMA, which is the International City County Managers Association, bestows upon its members worldwide. It signifies a significant commitment to high standards, ethics, continuous learning for local government professionals. In order to qualify for this designation, you have to have a combination of education experience and an ongoing dedication to professional development, which in turn benefits the local community and government. In a short time with us here with the city of Fayetteville, Jeff, as you all know, has been very instrumental in helping us achieve our financial and budget success, and I'm very pleased to say as well that we're on track, Mayor and members of council, to be ready to submit our annual audit on time. There are some challenges that we, like many communities across the country, will face because of IRS and the federal government shutdown. There's some final rules that have to be disseminated, but we are well on our way and are very confident that we will again have a on-time and clean audit as well. And a lot of that is due to the hard work of Jeffrey Yates, and again, who will be recognized with me in Tampa later this month. So if you would just please join me in congratulating Jeff for this milestone in his career. And then we also would say that for that and other updates as well, you can join the city manager's messenger, which is published every Friday electronically by going to the city of Fayetteville's website and signing up for it, and we'll have information about the art exhibit and other city programs every week on Friday delivered to your mailbox. That's all, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Hewitt. Congratulations, Mr. Yates, for your great accomplishments. So continue to represent us and make us proud. We appreciate you. All right, council, moving to item 6.0, the approval of the agenda. With that, I'll take a motion, Councilmember here.
Yes, sir, Mayor. So moved to approve the agenda.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember here to approve, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. And we'll go to Councilmember Banks McLaughlin for your vote.
Right.
All right. Madam Clerk, is she unanimous in those voting? Item 7.0 is the public forum. Per the city council policy 120 dot nine, is the time that residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. The public forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes each to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. No time will be yielded to any speaker by another speaker. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the office of the city clerk no later than 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. When the city clerk calls your name, please approach the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. When the light located on the podium changes from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining to speak, and when the light changes red, that means your time has expired. Any remaining speakers of the public forum list did not have an opportunity to address the city council will have the option to have their name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forum. So with that, we will begin our public forum. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our first speaker is Ms. Judith Ann Lee. Ms. Lee, not present. Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls, not present. Our next speaker is Ms. Catherine Goldblatt.
Good evening, Ms. Goldblatt.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the safety of the Haymount and Terry Sanford neighborhoods in Fayetteville. These are incredibly family-friendly and highly walkable neighborhoods made markedly unsafe by the lack of high-visibility crosswalks at the very busy intersections. There are no crosswalks on the intersections of East and West Dobbin and Morganton, which have nearly blind corners, and at the intersection of East and West Dobbin and Fort Bragg Road. The crosswalk in front of the Westdale Vintage Shop, which is a Haymount business, does not have high-visibility paint or adequate signage, considering it crosses the main road, and the crosswalk in front of Alma Eastham Elementary is partially paved over by some old roadwork, which makes it barely visible. All of this to call attention to improving the safety of the neighborhood and improving foot traffic to local businesses, especially now that the Cape Fear Regional Theater will be open soon for its spring season, meaning hundreds more in pedestrian traffic in those very busy congested areas. I'll call special attention to a conversation I had with some of the firefighters at Station Two, the crosswalk in front of Miller's Brew, where I believe it was about six or eight months ago, pedestrian was actually struck in that crosswalk. The open letter penned to the city of Fayetteville and presented at the August Public Forum now has support from over 75 businesses, individuals, and neighborhood organizations, including the Friendship House, Fleet Feet, Leclerc's General Store, New Life Restoration LLC, Cornerstone Home Lending, District House of Taps, Haymount Homes, Highland Birth and Wellness Collective, La Bohemia Farms, Lilybird Properties LLC, Miller's Brew, Samet Corporation, Wolfgang Fayetteville, and Curate Essentials. All of these businesses, many individuals, and the greater community are imploring the city council to expeditiously install new crosswalks where there are none, repaint the ones that already exist, and erect high-visibility lighted flashing signage so that the community can be safer and no other person gets hurt in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hewitt, as part of pedestrian plan, where, what's the status of refurbishing and installation of some of these crosswalks?
We are, I don't see Brian here. Brian, if you could, some of the streets that were mentioned are NC DOT streets, some of them are city streets, but we have been actively looking not only at the crossings there, but also the parking in that area.
Well, I'm not speaking specifically to that. This is a common thread. So as it relates to the pedestrian plan, can you touch that a little bit?
Brian?
As it speaks directly to the pedestrian plan, we are coordinating with DOT in terms of funding that we have available and coordinating with their project timelines to identify the areas where we can enhance their pavement markings, as well as identify the areas where we can implement the pavement markings on their behalf or implement pavement markings on our roads. But we are currently working on them.
So under the non-NCDOT?
Currently, we are approaching those, and those are in the schedule, or we are working to get those into our schedule, both DOT and we're still coordinating with them to get them into the correct schedule.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Goldblatt, for your participation tonight. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Benjamin Holtquist.
Good evening, sir.
Oh, good evening. Hi, my name is Ben Holtquist from Strong Towns, Fayetteville, and I signed up to talk about density incentives, but given the tragedy on Rose Hill Road last week, I think it's necessary to talk about traffic calming. Everyone knows Fayetteville has a speeding problem, but most people I encounter seem to think the Fayetteville residents are unique creatures. They have speeding in their DNA. While it is true that we have a significant population of young thrill-seeking men and women because of our proximity to Fort Bragg, the problem isn't our people, it is our roads. The roads are too wide, too straight, and too fast. Some of the traffic calming solutions I talk about may be unfamiliar to you, but I only have a few minutes, so please get with me or Dr. Hewitt afterwards, and we can discuss them in detail. The first I'm going to be, the first one I'm sure you are familiar about, which is roundabouts. I know you're getting a lot of complaints about the roundabouts on Rose Hill Road, a couple miles north of the tragic crash last week, but there is a reason the deadly crash didn't happen there. Roundabouts slow people down, and especially while people learn how to use them, slows them down even further. They may increase fender benders initially, but it is better to put cars in body shops than to put people in body bags. The second strategy is to narrow roads. Highways in the country are wide to accommodate corrections at high speeds. Low speeds in the city, at low speeds in the city, there is less need for this padding, but when provided, it feels natural and safe to drive faster. I think most of us know it is easier to speed on Clifdale Road than in, than on Yadkin Road. Narrowing roads have the added benefit of being cheaper to maintain and reducing impermeable surface to help with stormwater management. Adding trees along streets and in medians can also visually narrow our streets and have the added benefit of reducing city heat island effects. Other traffic calming measures include speed humps and raised crosswalks, pinch points, bull bouts, chicanes, and median islands. These are all relatively inexpensive way to get people to slow down. Education campaigns and enforcement will never be enough to improve street safety. Most drivers are already done with their mandatory driver education and can't remember anything from it anyway. Enforcement is too sparse, too sparse to cover the whole city at all times and too expensive to expand. What does work is physics. Physically narrowing streets and putting up obstacles may seem dangerous, but they make people slow down and pay attention. I know you don't control, I know you don't have control of the most dangerous streets in our city, however, there is a lot that can be done on our city streets, and you do have influence to help NC DOT do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor?
Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Biller.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, sir, John from Fayetteville, North Carolina. Not here to give a big speech, but my concern is the main event over at the mall. I don't know if you noticed the Druid Star. The star that you have appears kind of like a proper depiction, but if you look at the star here, Star Mendez. I'm DOD Army civilian 30 years, so I've been dealing with this for a long time. The Baphomet Star also is, is the improper way of displaying the star. So my emotions come out. I'm a born-again Christian, and I think it's been going on too long. I don't want to get too deep into it, but the Baphomet is half male, half female. So it's rampant. And what's that? Oh, thanks, sir. It's rampant all over the nation and all over the world. So my issues with that place, I talked to the manager there, he never got back with me. So my issue is, is the sign concern for that place. So if I could get some kind of feedback or some kind of ordinance that could be done with that ethos there, because they're not getting back with me. So, you know, I guess I'm emotional with this. You know, I've been dealing with this for a long time, not me myself, but others. So, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to get your input, you know, on the ordinance of that sign of that particular star.
Well, well, thank you. During the public forum, our, our job is to listen, so we don't have a lot of input, but we, we appreciate that, and we'll be in touch if there's any clarification on the sign restrictions that are in place.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And also, if I could add something, the city art center, it's got some, some depictions that shows nationalities being diminished. I don't know if you noticed that or not, but if you walk in there, there's this morbid art. And, you know, again, you know, I have a concern, you know, for the youth and for the adults. You know, I get emotional about these things because, you know, I believe in, you know, all kindreds, all tongues, all nations. You know, I'm a talent. You know, my dad came over on the boat in 1950, you know, so, you know, I, I struggle. I have 30 years here. So if you could address that at that art center, you know, that's also a place that needs to be discussed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Kimberly Lee. Ms. Kimberly Lee, not present. Our next speaker is Mr. Konchon Kamone.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. I forgot I should have been part of the photograph with the homeless people a while ago. The reason I'm here tonight continued from last couple months ago when I was here about my house at 206 Campbell. See if you can, anybody recognize it. You stand in front of a gas station on Gilisby. There's the house on your right-hand side. The city threatened me to tear down my house after I bought a couple houses from Colonel Anderson. You know, he retired from US Air Force. He's a good friend of mine. I've been working on it since 2021, and then all of a sudden, court enforcement kind of come over and then placed the stickers saying hazardous and dangerous, you know. I said, what? You know, and he said, yeah, this is cracked on the foundation on your front porch, front porch, cracked on it, and he said it's dangerous. And then the peel, I mean, the paint kind of peeled off from the, from the backside of the house a little bit, okay? From being like 27 years, you know, left alone, I mean dormant, you know, for more than two decades. And after I've been working on it and like less than a year, and then I got the, the note on the door stating that it's dangerous, you know? And then they gave me like 30 days or 60 days to fix it, fix it. I said, are you kidding me? You know? You should have seen inside the house and, you know, the, the magnitude of the remodel, you know, remodeling. And so last time I asked all you, I mean, you know, on and off, I come to the city hall and ask, you know, what, what status of it? They said, yeah, it's still, you know, going to be torn down. And I spend more money on it every day. I mean, put time on it, and it's still. Right on the 30th, past two weeks ago, I called, I called to report, you know, in front of my other house, like the chimney. You look at it, it's a hole, the hole on the chimney, and this thing, it's about to collapse. I mean, you know, come down. The homeless people, you know, go to the gas station, they on and off, and they kind of, you know, sit underneath, you know, the porch and stuff. And then...
You have to talk into the mic sort of, we can hear you, sir.
Yeah. And then two hours later, I saw the, the PWC power truck come to front of the 206 Campbell, my house. They're gonna tear down, I mean, they're gonna disconnect my, my power line. My heart kind of stopped, you know, pumping and stuff. I almost collapsed to the ground, you know? You got causing, you know, my, my health problem and stuff. You need to fix that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hewitt, I remember he, he spoke to us. I guess maybe privately, someone that's, that's dealing with that can give a, give a status about where that is, if, if he's trying to get back in compliance or if it's beyond that. Doesn't have to be anything publicly discussed, but maybe we can meet him at the corner.
Did you guys tear down my house? Where am I gonna be? Be the homeless?
Yeah. Mr., how you pronounce your last name? Kamone?
Kamone.
Kamone. Mr. Kamone, just, just wait right over here.
Mr. Mayor, we, we will contact him, but we're...
Right, but I remember he was here, but we need, you know, council members did inquire about that, so just, just have a seat, sir. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Dolores Wilson. Ms. Dolores Wilson, not here. Our next speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan, long time no see.
Good evening. I'm Sean McMillan from District Eight. As we gather in this public forum, I want to talk about something that's at the heart of the community's trust. It's the need for transparency and accountability in our city government. Over the last couple of months, I've spoken with hundreds of neighbors, and one of the most compelling issues has been, has been a perceived lack of honesty and forthrightness from our city government. from our city government. This perceived lack of transparency expands from everything, from how we account for millions of dollars of mismanaged projects, to how the city holds law enforcement officials accountable following police homicide. I want to remind us all that Fayetteville has an obligation to be open about how decisions are made and how we respond when things go wrong. One of the key steps we need to take is embracing the Sentinel Event Review, the SCR, to ensure that when serious incidents happen, we learn from them and make meaningful changes. The SCR was recommended by now Governor Josh Stein back in May of twenty twenty-three. A Sentinel Event is an incident that may, if properly examined and understood, prevent similar adverse outcomes in the future. Governor Stein's recommendation came following the death of Jada Johnson at the hands of the Fayetteville Police Department. Jada Johnson was a twenty-two-year-old mother shot seventeen times. Najee Hagan, Shakira McNair, Lawrence Graham, Trevor Smotherman, Kevin Grissette, Adrian Roberts, Jason Walker, Lawrence Artis, DeMarcus Brody, Joshua Oxendine, Justin Luth say this is just a partial list of those who've died locally of police homicide or in police custody. Others like Jalana Dunlap and Gerard Atkinson survived encounters but were victims of excessive force and overreach. We can only expect this list to grow if nothing is done to independently examine the factors that led to lethal encounters and/or alleged misconduct. I urge this council to stand in affirmation of our values as a community in support of the Sentinel Event Review. In the words of Ida B. Wells, "The right, the way to right wrongs is to turn the light of truth upon them." That's exactly what we must do. And a critical part of that light is restoring independent oversight as a pillar of accountability and transparency. We owe it to our community to have a system that is not just self-reflective but also independently reviewed, to truly hold ourselves to the highest standard. So I stand before you today not just to call for transparency as a principle, but to urge us all to support the adoption of the Sentinel Event Review process and to return independent oversight as a pillar to the Office of Community Safety. Let's make it clear that our city government is truly accountable to the people it serves. Thank you, all of us or none.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Ronnie Sinesz. Mr. Ronnie Sinesz, not present.
All right. All right, that concludes our public forum. Thank you to those who spoke and those who had signed up and were not able to make it. I guess you can sign up at the next public forum. At this time, we'll move to nine point O, Staff Reports, FY twenty-six First Quarter Strategic Performance Report.
You have the consent agenda, sir.
Getting ahead of my, getting excited. All right, eight point O is a consent. Council entertained a motion to approve consent.
Motion to approve consent agenda, Mayor.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Harris, seconded by Thompson. Discussion on that motion. All right, council, I'll look to you before you vote. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Bring.
All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous now at the nine point O Staff Report. Should I be Mr. Lowry and Mr. Brave Boy? See you, gentlemen.
I know you're a little excited to get to this.
I know, I was waiting to get you up here so we could see, see what this dashboard looks like.
Right. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, City Councilmembers, I'm Chris Lowry, and joining me tonight is Mr. Andy Brave Boy from the SPA Office, Strategic Planning and Performance Analytics. Tonight, we are pleased to present FY twenty-six, Quarter One Strategic Plan Performance Update. This presentation highlights your strategic direction, how your strategic direction continues to drive measurable process across Fayetteville. Our goal is to connect performance data with real impact it's having in our community on safety, housing, youth, economic growth, and connectivity. As we begin a new fiscal year, staff continues to build on the solid foundation that was set in FY twenty-five. The FY twenty-six plan moves us further from planning into our execution, focusing on measurable results. Each data point tells a story of how staff and council's partnership is improving quality of life for all of our residents. The update you'll see today shows tangible progress and accountability across all five of our priorities. It also highlights how our departments are coordinating in efforts such as OCS and FPD working together on community safety, or ECD and Development Services aligning resources with housing and revitalization goals.
Good evening, Council Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. So we'll begin by doing a brief overview of the FY twenty-six strategic priorities. Priority one is ongoing commitment to a comprehensive approach to community safety. Priority two, to enhance economic growth throughout the city. Priority three, to continue the city's commitment to revitalization efforts and housing needs. Priority four is to evaluate and expand transportation and other connectivity for residents. And priority five is to increase parcel recreation opportunities for youth engagement and interaction. Council, as you recall from the FY, I guess that would be FY twenty-six Strategic Planning Retreat, four of the five priorities for FY twenty-six either are continuations or enhancements of the successful FY twenty-five strategic plan. The new priority for FY twenty-six is transportation and connectivity. This was created to improve mobility, access, and coordination of infrastructure improvement across the city. Though the four council priorities, comprehensive community safety, economic growth, revitalization in housing, and youth engagement remain focus areas for both council and for city residents. Now, before we continue for the performance measures, I just wanted to clarify the type of data that we're looking at here tonight. Most of our KPIs are what you call lagging metrics, meaning they show how well staff has performed in the previous quarter, not necessarily what's happening right now in real time. And to that, a lagging metric is basically a performance measure that reflects the results of past activities, or in our case, the previous quarter. So they tell us what has already happened, providing valuable historical insights, and this is important because it serves as baselines for planning, forecasting, and to make tweaks and necessary adjustments where needed. And throughout the presentation, you will see a few KPIs that are highlighted in yellow, and just for transparency, these are metrics that maybe I fell just short of their Q1 So for priority one, this is our comprehensive, comprehensive community safety. Priority one continues to deliver measurable results in prevention, response, and community collaboration. As such, all metrics in priority one are meeting or improved upon the respected FY twenty-six target for Q1. Through the Community Safety Micro Grant Program, eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars was awarded to twenty neighborhood-led projects, directly investing in the community-driven safety and violence prevention initiatives. The Fayetteville Cares Day Resource Center recorded over three thousand one hundred visits in quarter one, providing critical access to housing, health, and support services with forty-two active partner organizations. And keep in mind, our target for FY twenty-six was thirty partners. The Office of Community Safety continues to strengthen partnerships and outreach, conducting eighty-four field visits, responding to two hundred and fourteen mental health or homelessness-related calls, and making fifty-two referrals to connect residents with essential services. OCS has also organized fifty-nine community of engagement events, including three youth night outs and a youth-led proof event, reaching over a hundred and fifty participants. These programs help reduce barriers to resources, improve community trust, and align directly with council's goal of prevention through connection. And as you recall, the priority is to have a comprehensive approach to community safety. In this way, the fire department's ninetieth percentile response time remains efficient at six minutes and fifty-four seconds, as well as, as well as the police department's priority one call response time, which averages five hundred and thirty-one seconds or eight minutes and fifty-one seconds. And both of these targets are industry standards for accreditation across the fire department and the, and the police department. So collectively, council, these outcomes demonstrate Fayetteville's commitment to comprehensive safety, investing in prevention, mental health, and outreach, while also maintaining strong response performance across departments.
Looking at priority two, it focuses on expanding Fayetteville's economic base through partnerships, innovation, and small business success. In quarter one, the city invested over two point one four million dollars through ECD grants and loans, funds that directly support our small businesses, development, workforce programs, and even community revitalization projects. Three new general contractors were qualified through the city's License Prep Program, which helps small, which helps small, minority, and women-owned businesses participate in construction and city projects. Participation in the Future So Bright Workforce Initiative increased by two hundred and eighty-two percent, connecting eighty-four participants with local career opportunities when compared to last year of only twenty-two participants. Staff continues to collaborate with FCEDC to align city goals with regional economic development strategies, ensuring a unified approach to business retention and also business attraction. Staff also began discussing info around the Tier One Economic Development Plan to position Fayetteville for state and federal funding opportunities while expanding marketing efforts around development tools, finance tools. Looking ahead, staff will focus on developing a marketing strategy for development finance tools, exploring additional public-private partnerships, and expanding small business access to city-supported programs. Looking here, while early quarter numbers for small business investments and permits are slightly below target, these measures go through natural ebbs and flows with market conditions and how much risk businesses are willing to take. As confidence improves and projects advance, we expect stronger results in the coming quarters. Staff continues partnering with our businesses and our development community to keep Fayetteville positioned for growth. Our priority three remains a cornerstone for council's strategic vision, with staff making measurable progress in housing development and community revitalization. This quarter, one point one million dollars of a seven point two million dollar target in construction financing was dispersed, supporting the future creation of two hundred and ninety, two hundred and ninety-four affordable multifamily housing units. These investments expand housing access and stability for residents while strengthening key development partnerships. The city also allocated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to community housing development organizations to produce nine affordable single-family homes, continuing our commitment to increasing attainable housing opportunities across all of our Fayetteville neighborhoods. Through collaboration with local organizations, the city helped six families transition from crisis to stability. Through rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention programs, a direct example of how these investments improve quality of life at the individual level. The Home Buying Hero Program, it continues to be an open door to homeownership for many working families. This quarter, thirteen home buyers received three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in down payment assistance, funded through a combination of seven home-funded awards, three housing trust funds awards, and three general fund awards. We've had six blighted properties that were, were demolished this quarter, improving neighborhood appearance and safety. Some revitalization measures are lagging due to project timelines and or funding not being in place at the time, but the pipeline of projects remains strong and steady going forward. Together, these initiatives highlight council's continued focus on housing affordability, neighborhood revitalization, and economic mobility, ensuring Fayetteville remains a place where residents can live, work, and thrive.
Priority four is our newest strategic area of focus. It's to evaluate and expand transportation and other connectivity for residents. It aims to enhance how residents and visitors move throughout Fayetteville, whether by road, buses, sidewalks, trails, bikes, or air. As such, transit completed the initial steps of the Title V Fair and Service Equity Study, ensuring that the city's transit system remains equitable and accessible for all riders. Additionally, development has begun on the city's new Master Connectivity GIS Overlay map. And this is actually a new tool created directly through this priority that will integrate transportation, infrastructure, and development data to inform project management, planning, and future development decisions. In this regard, for Q1, staff incorporated three city plans into the new GIS overlay map. In this way, transit continues to, is efforts to improve route frequency and rider communication, including new marketing and digital tools with Markcom to better serve residents. The airport team, as a key stakeholder in this priority, is continuously exploring strategies to expand flight options, enhance regional connectivity by utilizing that council-approved four hundred thousand dollar air service incentive to foster public-private partnerships. In this regard, staff will continue evaluating connectivity needs citywide with a focus on supporting future growth and making Fayetteville's transportation and connectivity network safer, effective, and more connected for all residents. Priority five is one of the priorities that actually directly rolled over from last strategic plan. And youth engagement remains a cornerstone of our commitment strategy, of our community strategy, and youth engagement data continues to trend upward. The Orange Street School STEM Initiative reached three hundred and fifty-one participants, expanding youth access to hands-on learning and skill development. Programs like the Piles Junior Officials and the Fayetteville Common Youth Council exceeded participation expectations for quarter one. Across parcel recreation and OCS, a hundred and four youth events and programs were held in quarter one, engaging a hundred and eighty new youth. And these program, these programs foster leadership, teamwork, and confidence while keeping our youth connected to positive outcomes. Recreation projects like the Tennis Center, Cape Fear River Park, MacArthur Sports Complex, and Veteran Park Two continue to move forward, supporting council's vision for accessible,
So as we move into quarter two, staff will continue to analyze data, refine our strategies, and engage stakeholders to maintain momentum. The next quarterly update will be presented to council in January twenty twenty-six, providing a mid-year snapshot of progress across all five of our priorities. Staff will also focus on expanding partnerships with local organizations to further strengthen efforts around safety, housing, and youth engagement. While some measures are still developing, early results indicate that the city is on pace to meet or improve upon most of our FY twenty-six targets. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and council members, your direction and continued support remains vital in advancing this progress. Thank you for your leadership and commitment as we continue to build a safer, stronger, and better-connected Fayetteville. We appreciate your continued partnership as we advance these priorities and deliver measurable results that improve quality of life for all residents.
Thank you, sir. Do have a couple of questions for you, Councilmember Harris and then Benavente.
Thank you, Mayor. Guys, always, as usual, thank you for great reports and showing us just how involved we are in our communities. As I look at bullet one, and you gave us the different timeframes for... I don't know if it was police and fire, but I thought it was at least fire. Yeah, police and fire, but especially with fire with that six, with that six point five four. Is that six point five four, is that the top, or is that the basic time period? Because they may be able to get into an area even sooner, and that's what we want, is get them in. So is that what that means?
Yep, so our, the target, which is the benchmark they have to meet is that seven minutes and twenty seconds. Our time of response right now for the ninetieth percentile is six minutes and fifty-four, so we're coming in below our, where our max that we want to be is the seven minutes and twenty seconds. We're coming in at almost twenty-six seconds...
Pretty good.
...faster than our, our target for FY twenty-six.
Yeah, pretty good, so thumbs up to our, our guys in the red trucks. Whenever we look over at... I had a person that called today, and I was just, I think that was, okay, yeah, that's on the, on number two. I had, I received a call today from a father and son that had some concerns, needed some help, and I did... And I did get a response back from staff that OCS also would be involved in helping. Now, I see this report today. Is there going to be a connection there that will probably be stated in the future reports to come for folk that may be homeless or father needs some assistance with whatever it is for he and his son? Is that going to be some form of a connection? Because whenever I sent my email out, I thought I was sending it to the right... I always copy the right departments, but I did not copy OCS on that particular one. Is that something that they're going to be connected in there somewhere too and just maybe not always be noticed in the report?
Chris, for that item, sir, we will be tracking that separately with our engagement manager, Michelle Smith-Reorden. This is on the overall high level on the strategic plan. But if you send anything to Michelle or to myself, or you need a staff on third floor, including clerk's office, we make sure it gets to the right person, and we'll be getting you back some information on that as well, sir.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that. I was just wondering if... And I'll stand down on it, but I was just wondering if there was going to be some form of connections where that would also be a part of our reports. Yeah, but thank you.
And a lot of this information, sir, we try to include and get information and feedback from the departments. So as we're working with them, we intentionally meet with them because there is some information that we need to be able to move back and forth. So we try to get as much detail within these reports as we can.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will this be a part of y'all's future efforts with the Office of Community Safety to have a social media presence for that department?
Well, one of the things as well, thank you, if I can, Chris.
Please, thank you, Ms. Rann.
We are planning to bring the OCS as a quarterly report to council. When we have our next report out on police, fire, we will also be including the OCS for that exact reason that Dr. Herr mentioned, and you as well, Councilmember Benavente, because understanding that the council and the community want to drill down on the work that they're doing and the impact that they're having based upon council's funding of that department. But it is not at the moment, but we will be having that added to your quarterly reports at that same time.
I get, yeah, just, I guess something to think about because I know that we've done the four events, and then I saw in the stats that there were over almost 200 community events. And I know that citizens are always wondering, you know, how can they get plugged in and be most aware of all those things? And I could just see in the future, the same way FPD has got their Facebook, the way Fire has their Facebook, you know, this third office that lives under the city manager's purview, if it was ever in the cards, you know, again, not today, not tomorrow, but, you know, perhaps in the near future, another way of kind of being a community calendar resource that way.
Absolutely. Good evening again, council. City Manager, City Attorney, Mayor, Mayor Protem, John Jones, Director of the Office of Community Safety. So really quick to Councilmember Herr's question. Yes, sir, the calls that you see that were reported, the 214, that would be counted as the call for the next quarter. Just to provide some clarity, that is my staff directly gets a call, whether that's from PD or that's from community itself. So this quarter, we've had 214 calls. And then what those next steps are, just for clarity, is my team, whether that's my Rapid Response Lead, Deanna Braggs, and/or my Behavioral Health Lead, Orlando, then proceeds to work with that person that we are being connected to or has called us directly. So what that looks like is coordination of resources, working alongside the organizations here in the city of Fayetteville to provide next steps. We received some calls even while I'm in council, so those are the calls that were being reported in that 214. To your point, Councilmember Benavente, we are working with Lauren and his team to identify a communication strategy for OCS, but also to provide some clarity on those events that we support or engage in. Those are events that not, we maybe not have, like, they're not the youth night events, but they are events that we have been invited to, to come speak on behalf of OCS. And all of those are in community, so they're not city event, they're not like city of Fayetteville staff events. These are all events that my team has went out to, to share on the work on the OCS, but also myself and engaging after hours, et cetera. So that's what those numbers really highlight.
That's great to hear, Mr. Director. Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'll just move.
Oh, yeah, I've got a couple more.
Yes, sir, my apologies.
All right, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to see Mr. Andrew Legala, but I know he's gone for the day. But I was having a conversation with him earlier, Mr. Manager. And this is for our strategic plan of transportation. And it's imperative that we spend a lot of our efforts in trying to get our airport to grow. And the conversation that we were having is what you mentioned in your KPIs is private partnerships. How can, or how can you explain to the public how we can enhance getting private partnerships to help expand our airport?
Kelly, if you could.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Strickland, Assistant City Manager. Thank you, Councilmember Thompson, for that question. One initiative that our Airport Director, Mr. Andrew Legala, is working on in conjunction with the city manager and some outside partners, community partners, is matching the $400,000 that council appropriated of general fund dollars to help supplement new air service development. One thing that we have discovered from our consultants and from other communities who have a regional airport is that when applying for the Small Community Air Service Development Grant that is offered by the state of North Carolina, one thing that is very impactful and really bolsters your chances of getting approval for that grant is not only having the city make a local contribution, but members of the community make private contributions to that fund too, to help offset any expense that might result from new air service development.
Thank you very much. I knew that. I just wanted the public to hear it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. One other question, not for you, Ms. Kelly, but thank you very much. This is pertaining to housing. As I looked at the numbers, our hero program is maxed out. You've almost maxed out the affordable housing for those who have applied. How is it going to affect us moving forward, knowing that we have a government shutdown and we don't even have anybody in charge of HUD, if I'm not mistaken? So how is that going to cut, is that funding going to affect us here locally, that shortness of funding? Alex, if you can.
Sir, currently, we have already signed our HUD grant funds, and so for the upcoming year, we are good. And also, at this point, we have $665,000, $100,000 remaining in our Home Buyer Heroes program. So we feel that we're in good position, and we are going to continue to serve the citizens of Fayetteville.
Well, let me ask you a follow-up. Since our homebuyers program, and I'm so excited about our homebuyers program, that's how we expand our city, if it's already maxed out at 10 for this quarter, do we raise the...
So that was a goal.
That was a goal.
That was a goal, but yes.
So we didn't turn anybody away, isn't it?
No, we are not maxed out. We will continue, and we are booking closings every day.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Did have a question before I go to Councilmember Benavente. Guys, this is good. You guys are real good about helping us do these quarterly check-ins. And so on here, you see everything from police response time to the number of grants awarded to the number of dollars given out to the various loan programs, to roads paved. There's a lot of information in here. Where can the general public find this, other than in tonight's link? Where can they find this?
Yes, sir. Online, you'll go to the city manager's office. Under that, you would have SPA's page, and on there, you'll have each one of the quarterly updates. Usually, the next day, day after, we upload this PowerPoint, as well as a city scorecard, which goes a little bit more in detail with even more KPIs that we track. They can go on there and pull up the PowerPoint or the scorecard itself and actually look at the data that we're presenting here tonight.
All right. And also, you know, as a piggyback to a conversation took place earlier, Ms. Jody, you're the communications guru for the city. We were talking about public information requests and other things that are available for the public. Can you speak a little bit about where the public can find some of this? And the reason I want to do this is we hear a lot about making sure that the government's transparent and that there's information here. We want to make sure that the people can get to it because tonight, you've covered a whole gamut of things, from dollars given out, the grants given out, the roads paved, to public information requests, to all kinds of things, OCS and the number of cases that you've responded to. All kinds of things are there, but citizens, this is a two-way street that we have to look for, but we have to make it easy. So can you talk about how we can better get this information out so that we can address that boogeyman word of transparency?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to. So Mr. Beimer and his team do a wonderful job of making sure that we put as much information out publicly as possible. I would encourage residents to go to the website, fayvalency.gov. There is a lot of stuff there because we do a lot of stuff across many, many departments. And Fay TV and our social media too. We're on every social media platform. But we really want to focus in the upcoming months and year, as we discussed earlier, on making sure that we're really intentional and proactive about promoting all of those things. And where do you go? And where do we get the information that the public wants to know about our city operations and services, whether it's public records requests and all of that publicly available information from our projects, to our finances, to our budget, to all of those things? Almost all of that is publicly available on the city's website. Sometimes it's just a matter of knowing exactly where to go to get it. So we're going to do a little bit more intentional effort about putting that out on social media, on the city's social media pages, on Fay TV, and of course, more prominently on the website as well.
And Mr. Mayor, I would add to that as well that if not later this month, early next month, we'll be launching OpenGov, which will be our portal for people can see everything and more that they want to about our finances. You'll be able to see who we've paid, how much we've paid them, and why we've paid them. We actually have a project portal online right now on our capital improvement projects. And so projects that folks talk about, about whether it be the Tennis Center, which will be opening in November, or whether or not it is the Rose Hill Road Sidewalks, which are almost done, or whether it's Mabel Smith's T-Building, which we opened up earlier this year, or Fire Station Four, which will be giving council a very comprehensive update on November. You'll find detailed information about that already online. But I think the biggest one that we are looking for is the launch of OpenGov, which will be, I call it, the public's checkbook. And it will have more information available than we've ever been able to push out in our normal channels. And we will definitely try to link it to all of the dashboards that Chris and Andy are talking about as well. The information is here, and it's available. And we are, as we talked about upstairs as well, Mayor, members of council, working to streamline our public information request system as well so that we can at least let people know where the records are and the timeframe for us to fulfill those requests. Well, I appreciate the update. I know you guys work hard to get the information to us. I just want to make sure that the public can get to it and make sure it's easy. So that's the reason I brought that out. So thank you for the explanation. Thank you for what you're doing, and look forward to even more access through those channels that you talked about. With that, I'll go to Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am prepared to make a motion. I just wanted one point of clarity, City Manager Hewitt. When you talk about the quarterly report that OCS is going to be producing, will that include some sort of data from the Day Resource Center? Maybe just how many people they're receiving? Just wanted to know if that was something in discussion. I don't need a direct answer, but a consideration. All right, that's all, that's all. In that case, Mr. Mayor, I'll just ask that we move that the city council that accept officially your '26 first quarter strategic performance report.
All right. The motion by Councilmember Benavente is seconded on the sure service by Councilmember Davis. Discussion on that motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to receive the report. Councilmember Banks-McGoughlin? Councilmember Banks-McGoughlin? All right, motion carries. Green. All right, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Counselor Tenpuno is the public hearing. At this time, we are proceeding to hold the public hearing. Ma'am? You got a delay on your phone?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. She's green. All right, public hearing. At this time, we're moving into the public hearing where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We will begin with a staff report, and then we'll move into the formal hearing. Fifteen minutes will be allowed by each side, those in favor and those opposed of the item discussed in the hearing. Individual speakers, however, are limited to three minutes each, unless by previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record, and you may then begin to address the council. When the light on the podium changes from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And at the end of your allotted time, you will hear the timer or the red light will come on to indicate your time has expired. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Jacqueline Abbott. I'm the Community Relations Manager for Economic and Community Development, here to talk to you tonight about the proposed substantial amendments to the 2021, 2022, and 2025, 2026 annual action plans. A substantial amendment is a formal change to a U.S. Housing and Urban Development-approved annual action plan that is significant enough to require public notice, citizen participation, and city council approval. The substantial amendments are needed in this case due to shifting funds between activities, adding a new activity, and accepting newly awarded funds from HUD. For 2122, that plan was adopted in May of 2021. We had an original home ARP allocation of $3.3 million. And for 2526, that was recently adopted by council in April of this year. $460,000 was allocated to the Community Development Block Grant, Neighborhood Resources activity, and we had no allocation for affordable housing under CDBG because most of our affordable housing activity is done through the home program. For 2122, we received a revised award notice from HUD in April of this year, and were instructed to amend our annual action plan in accordance with the city's participation plan. The public notice and comment period was from September 4th to October 5th. We received no comments. It is an additional allocation of about $5,000, increasing our home ARP award to $3.4 million. And for 2526, program income was reconciled from previous funding cycles. We shifted funds between activities and added a new activity. Again, the same public comment period, and we received no comment. $460,000 was the original budget for Neighborhood Resources. We're proposing moving $180,000 of the program income to create a new budget of $640,000. And we're proposing moving $100,000 into a newly created affordable housing program under the Community Development Block Grant. Next steps that we need from you tonight are to conduct the public hearing, and then, if it is your pleasure, to approve the substantial amendments.
All right, thank you for that. With that, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
All right, just before I close the public hearing, can, I do have a question for you. Almost got away that easy, didn't you? All right, question for you. Can you just explain a bit the shift in the funds and the creation of the new $100,000 in the new affordable housing new budget? What are you planning to do that you hadn't been able to do or provide with that?
So, excuse me, thank you, Mayor. For the $100,000 CDBG activity, we have a proposed small-scale development that we're looking at, a small cottage farm style. And then for the other remaining funds, we are looking at doing the toe-kay tennis courts.
Okay.
For a pickup.
Okay, all right. All right. All right. Councilmember Herr, go to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, let me close the public hearing real quick, all right, before Jennifer gets me. All right.
Yes, sir, I move that we hold a public hearing and approve the substantial amendments. But I thought she said she would hold a public hearing for the finances. Okay. Then, Mayor, I move that we that we approve, that we approve the agenda, that we approve this agenda item.
All right, so there's a motion to approve and accept the annual action plan with the modifications given as a second by, do we have a second? Second by Councilmember McNair. Discussion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Banks-McGoughlin?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Alex. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, all your team. Doing that. Council, will entertain a motion to adjourn? All right, have a good evening. All right, have a good evening.
Yes, yes, yes.